I want to welcome everybody who's dropped in already. We're going to wait another minute or so. We have another board member, too, who will be joining us. And when they get here, we'll get started.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, I can now, Brian. Thanks.
Perfect. Thank you. Just so you know, my laptop died today, so I don't have a camera.
Oh, okay.
Sad panda.
I'm going to go ahead and start interpretation. I think we'll still be able to add the second interpreter when she comes in because I've got her name listed.
Yeah, go ahead. She says she's in it, so we should be able to start. Thank you.
Okay, I might need to promote her then. I'll see if I can find her name. Oh, yeah, there we go.
Okay, I think all the board members are here that are going to be able to be here tonight. I'm Ron Mock. I'm the vice chair of the board, and I'm calling the meeting to order now.
Yeah.
Because, yes?
Hang on, I haven't started interpretation yet. Just a moment.
Okay, we'll wait.
Yeah, buenas noches. Vamos a empezar la reunión.
All right, now we are good to go.
All right, so again, I've called the meeting to order as the vice chair. Our chair, Brandy Penner, isn't going to be able to join us tonight, so I'm taking over for the first time ever. So I hope that cuts me a little slack if I mess up. I want to start by asking our superintendent to explain in Spanish the interpretation that we're offering.
Okay, hola, buenas noches. Gracias por asistir esta noche. Como siempre tenemos servicios de interpretación disponibles en español. Haga clic en el globo o en la configuración de idioma, en la opción de la aplicación de Zoom, y ahí puede tener el español pronto para ustedes. Gracias.
Thank you. I think Rebecca is a volunteer. Delete this in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Rebecca. So I want to just go over the agenda that we have tonight. I think there's one change that might be from what we printed. After we review the agenda, will be the time for public comments. We have a few that are ready to go, I think. Then we'll have board and superintendent comments. Then we will go through our consent agenda and see if we approve it. And then reports and presentations will follow. We'll have the school in-person update from Superintendent Morlock, a financial report from our financial director, Nikki Fowler, an update on the bond from Greg Coschello, the board secretary, a technology report from Luke Neff. We might have a break about that time if we're about 8:40 and on schedule. And then we'll have a review of our Goal Two of our strategic plan by Superintendent Morlock. Under new business, we have the school start time proposal we'll be discussing, and a calendar change for the secondary.
So who's our vice vice chair?
It's a good question. If he can hit the boardroom, let me see. I'll let him know. Just a second. He's going to try leaving and rejoining, and we'll see if that fixes it.
There's an adventure I didn't mean to have. Can anybody hear me?
Yes.
It's a mystery. Something just cut me off. Maybe somebody's putting a practical joke on me on my first time. I don't know where you last heard me. I think I got down to the end and mentioned that we were having an executive session. Is that where I left off? Yeah, and we'll have an executive session after the end of our meeting. So the first thing is public comments. And Greg, who's first on our list right now?
First on the list has not appeared in the meeting yet, so we'll go to the second one, which is Terry Newhouse, and then Jeanette Adlong will follow that.
Okay, let me say a few words before you start about this time. And again, I had that up, and now I have to get it back up. During this time, we're going to have some public comment. Hang on a second. Little bit of disorder here. Greg, you sent it to me, and I'll have it here in a sec. Wrong one. Shoot. I've lost the little introduction thing you sent me, Greg. Do you have it handy to send it to me again?
Yes, just a moment.
No, it's not in the package, right?
No.
Okay, sorry. Pickle.
All right, on the way.
Thank you. All right, the Newburgh School Board invites and encourages citizens' attendance and involvement. That's one of the good things that's increased during the COVID time. The board encourages citizens to share their ideas, opinions, raise questions, concerns, or compliments. So we thank you for coming, and we thank those of you who are ready to speak for asking us, requesting to speak. In order to do a timely meeting, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. I'll let you know when you have a minute left and 30 seconds, and then when your time is up. Requests to speak initiating during the meeting are not accepted. When called, please state your name, your relationship to the district, where you live, and the subject you will address. The board may choose not to address your request if your topic is outside the board's scope of governance. We ask that you remember that Oregon law prohibits us from discussing specific employees or their job performance. We also remind you that due to the judiciary nature of the board's role in resolving personnel issues and some other issues, we cannot hear comments specific to staff or incidents involving current issues under review in the board complaint process. And if you have some comments about board members, we ask that you focus those comments on board members' actions and try to refrain from personal or character attacks. So Jeanette, if you're ready, oh, Terry, if you're ready, why don't you go ahead? And then, Jeanette, you'll be ready next.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Terry.
I'm Terry Newhouse. I live at 826 Southwest Viewcrest Drive in Dundee. I'm not sure what you mean by relationship to...
The district? Are you a patron? Do you have kids in the district, that kind of thing?
No, we don't have kids in the district. We're taxpayers, so we pay for schools. I wanted to talk about the value of the school to the city of Dundee. It is one of the reasons that when we moved here six years ago, why we moved here, it essentially located school in Dundee gives us a sense of community. There are several advantages to a school nearby. There's more activity because parents are walking their kids to and from school and to and from events. I've come to find out that the tennis courts and the softball field and the skate park and playground and the other facilities that are located there are also on school grounds. And I believe that if those were to disappear because the school has moved somewhere else, I think that this community would suffer greatly because that's a kind of a center of activity for the community. The school makes Dundee more than just a wine stop on the road. It attracts families to live in our community, which is one of the things that we like about living here. As you can probably tell from my picture that I'm not the youngest guy in the world. And it's been many, many years since we've had kids, even in any kind of school. But we wanted to live in a community that has children running around, and it's a vibrant, active community, and we enjoy that. The school has an annual fundraiser that we go to every year, even though, again, I don't have kids of school-age children. We go because we like the event. We make a lot of donations at that event because we know that the donations stay in the community, and they go directly to help the school and the neighbors of people that live here. I would be concerned that if the school moves out of Dundee, there will be a lot fewer voters that in the future are going to vote in favor of the next school bond because the school will have left us behind. So I urge you to keep the school on the existing property and keep it in Dundee.
Thank you, Terry. Jeanette, if you're ready, and I think Rob Dakin would be up next. Are we getting Jeanette?
Jeanette, you'll need to unmute, and you should be ready to speak.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
I apologize if my video isn't working. I didn't realize that I was not plugged in, and my battery was low, so I wasn't able to get my video going before I started. So I apologize about that. My name is Jeanette Adlong. I'm on the Dundee City Council. And I'm actually here speaking on the same topic as the previous speaker, talking about the new Dundee Elementary School, which the entire community, I believe, supports, and we're all excited about. I went to the meeting a few weeks ago, the committee meeting, where the school district is trying to figure out where to cite the school, if you're going to retain it on the current property, or if you're going to purchase new property. And I support that process. The one thing that I would like to bring to your attention is the community's concern about the future of the park that sits right next to the Dundee School property. As you are well aware, that's over six acres of that park is owned by the school district. And there was a joint lease between CPRD and the school district that was struck almost 40 years ago for the community to have a large, almost 10-acre park. So that park has been in existence since about 1984 or 1985, and it's really central and focal to our community. The concern I have is that there was some suggestions made at your previous meeting that perhaps a portion of the school would be cited on the park property, on the ball fields, perhaps. Or also, there was a kind of a suggestion made that perhaps some of that park property might be sold in order to fund the purchase of a site elsewhere. I think that that would be a real blow to the Dundee community to lose our only large park. We don't have any other parks that are over two acres. And Dundee Park supplies are the only tennis courts, the only ball fields, the only covered picnic area, the only public restroom that we have in town. It is a place where people of all socioeconomic groups come and gather. People have family reunions in the park. We have parties in the park. It's a very important place, not only recreationally, but it provides an even playing field for all of us to have a place to go as a community. There's a lot of background that I'm sure you guys know about leases between you and the Parks District. The Parks District is responsible for replacing land or facilities that may not exist in the future on this property to be developed. I urge you to work with the Parks District so we can retain the footprint of the Dundee Billik Park and we don't lose our parkland. The city administrator for the city of Dundee is here to speak on this issue. He has a lot of background information about the lease. I just want to bring this to your attention. We do not want to lose our Dundee Park, even though we really support a new school in town. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rob, if you're ready, you'll be next. And I think we have Andrew Gallagher after that. Greg, is Eric showing up yet?
No, not yet.
Okay, we'll check in again. Rob, when you're ready?
Rob was here, and oh, there we go. Got it.
Okay. Hi there. I was really here to support Jeanette, but just briefly, the city council's position is that they really want to see Billik Park preserved as far as the existing footprint goes. And I suppose the only way to really make this come about is that this would end up needing to buy property at our alternate site in Dundee, which we would support that. One of the things of concern is that because the last lease that was with the school district expired back in 2012, at that time, there hasn't been the ability for the Park District to do any kind of long-range planning for the development of the park. They're not eligible to go after grants for rehabilitation of playground equipment, for example. And from our perspective, our hope is that if the school district does acquire other property, that CPRD would be able to acquire the park improvement, the property that the school district owns with a park improvements on it, by whichever means is applicable between the both parties. Obviously, ownership of CPRD would work out best from our perspective, and there's probably many ways that could be accomplished. But because of the federal grants, if the school district were to either sell the property or to use the property for school purposes, CPRD is responsible for going through what's called a conversion process and acquiring separate property, for example, to acquire new ball fields if ball fields are taken out of the current Billik Park. And that would be fine for meeting the terms of the federal grant, but it would really drastically change the use of Billik Park and really is not, again, the vision of the city council. So we're hoping that the school district would be able to initiate discussions to CPRD and start the process, if it's within your vision also, of selling the property to CPRD. And I guess that's all I have to say about that, unless you have questions.
Okay, thanks, Rob. I appreciate your bringing that to us tonight.
Thank you.
Andrew will be next.
Hello. Hello, everyone. Thank you for your time tonight. I am a parent of two students in secondary education in Newburgh School District and also one in elementary education at Dundee Elementary, where she just started this week, and things are going great. As you guys know, I'm also a teacher at Newburgh High School. About a couple months ago, I spoke out at the community conference regarding school start times. And I also, after that, a couple weeks, wrote the board and heard about my comments and heard my comments and my concerns come up for a very brief discussion in the board meeting before spring break. But the discussion kind of seemed fleeting at best. And my concern is that I still haven't heard any sort of solution regarding the problem of elementary students and families who have come to rely upon their older siblings for after-school care. The elementary schools have started after secondary schools in this district since way before I was part of this district as a teacher, which has been 10 years now. And for our district to flip that on its head and change a system to which many, many families have grown accustomed and have their older children watch the younger children after school seems to be a solution that solves a problem with another problem, for lack of a better term, to basically start secondary school after elementary school because of the idea that secondary students need more sleep. And I understand the scientific evidence, but it doesn't seem like we've solved the problem of starting the secondary schools and any kind of potential problems that will arise because we do that. And I must say that I am a person in this district who has an elementary school student whose older siblings watch her after school, but I also want to say that I am a part of the privileged percentage that can afford to pay for my elementary school student to be watched after school. And I know that there's a significant part of our district that cannot afford that. In addition to this, but also disregarding my earlier points, I've seen the proposed start times for secondary schools and believe that anything really after 8:15 or 8:30 for the high school at the absolute latest would be difficult for students. There are a large percentage of students who have after-school engagements, whether they're athletics or clubs or even jobs, that will be pushed back. And I saw your card, Ron. Thank you very much. I'm trying to wrap this up. But I think will adversely affect them. And I'm trying to skip through my whole comments that I submitted to you guys, but what I'd recommend is that if secondary were to flip-flop with elementary and start after elementary, that I hope that the school board recognizes that programs need to be put in place for families to ensure that we are taking care of the community. And I'm not saying that our school board or our district needs to pay for these programs. I think that our school board or our district, it's incumbent upon them to ensure that these programs are available, as well as to consider, just one second, to consider that pushing start times for secondary, especially high school, back and back and back and back will have adverse effects on athletics and also high schools with jobs. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Andrew. Have we seen Eric yet? Greg?
No, we have not.
Okay, so that will conclude the public comment. Thank you all for speaking and bringing your concern. It's been very helpful to hear from you. Time for board comments, and I'm going to follow Brandy's practice of sort of working around the room, the visual room. And I'm doing it in no particular order. I'm just going to start with the person who's next to me on my screen, which is Rebecca. Rebecca, do you have anything you want to say?
Yes, I want to thank Mark Johnson, who spoke last meeting about advisory. I was able to attend his advisory, and they learned about grit, and it was very useful. And I appreciated the work that they put into making advisory worthwhile. And I also want to congratulate the Newburgh Tiger football team. They're having a great season. And this Friday, I'm a bit torn between who to root for because they're playing Mountainside High School, where my son is a Newburgh High School alumnus, is coaching. So I wish both teams good luck.
All right, Rebecca, that's diplomatic, I guess. Good. Yes, you're next on my screen.
Yeah, thank you for the comments tonight. The elections are coming up, and I just want to encourage people to vote. I am for reelection, vote. And those students who can register to vote, you still have time to register, so that's all for tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Inez. Bob, you're next on my screen.
Yes, the only thing I have is that I just wanted to share with folks that I am withdrawing as a candidate for the school board in the upcoming election. Unfortunately, it's too late to have my name removed from the ballot, but I am asking folks to choose one of the other two candidates for Zone 5.
Okay, that wasn't as pleasant to me as the other announcements. Sorry to hear that, Bob. Dave, do you have something you want to say?
Yeah, I agree with Rebecca on that football game. Coach Hastings is doing a great job with the football team. And I know she's torn on who to root for there. It'll be a good game, Rebecca. I just noticed a lot of stuff coming through on the start times and the different kind of schedule we go to. Had a lot of comments coming my way, and then I know the board has received a lot of comments, so it seems like we have a lot to talk about on those. There's lots of opinions out there, and I hope we can have some good discussions on that before we vote on them, for sure. There's a lot of passion on both sides, and I just want to say thanks to the folks who called in tonight. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, David. Brian?
Nothing for me.
All right, thank you, Brian. I have a couple things I want to mention in relation to Dundee and the park. I kind of got introduced to school board issues when I was on the planning commission in Dundee, and a school board representative came and told us, to the surprise of most of the members of the planning commission, including me, that the district owned most of Billik Park. So I've been engaged on that issue since, I don't know, 2010, something like that, 2011. And we reaffirm what everybody has said from Dundee about the importance of that park to citizens of Dundee. It's an interesting problem from a political science point of view, which won't interest most of you, but that park is sort of shared by three different independent local government agencies, each who have fiduciary duties to their voters, who happen to be mostly or overlappingly the same voters, but different interests. The school district has to look out for education, and the park district has to look out for parks, and the city has to look out for city. So this is going to be an interesting problem to solve. I only speak for myself on this, but it is a problem that I think has possible solutions that will preserve the nature of the park for the citizens. And as long as I'm serving, I'll work to make those happen. I also should mention the elections that are coming up, since I'm also on the ballot and have, for the first time on my three times, I have an opponent, which of whom I welcome. And I look forward to getting to know him, meeting him, perhaps. There are still six candidates for the three seats, so they're all contested, which, again, I think is a good thing for us to have real democracy at stake. I'm hoping to be able to find a way to have a forum for all six candidates. I haven't talked to anybody about this yet of the other candidates, but it's a thing that I'm going to be working on for the next couple of weeks to see if we can pull something together. And I'll be reaching out to all the candidates to see if they'd be willing to participate in a forum if it... And I'll be reaching out to all the candidates to see if they'd be willing to participate in a forum if it looks like we can put one together so that the citizens can hear us all and give a little more fair airing to the challengers who don't get free airtime as board members, if that's worth anything. So just to let you know that that's where I'm trying to try to work and looking forward to an interesting election time and one when people have a chance to make meaningful choices, informed as much as possible. Okay, that's all the board comments. Superintendent comments?
Thank you, Ron. So first, let me start by just thanking Bob for his service to the board, navigating both good times and hard times through a budget crisis, a construction bond passage, hiring of superintendent, my favorite part. And finally, a global pandemic with some wildfires thrown in for good measure and many, many other things. So Bob, just wanted to thank you for your steady, steady leadership and what you have done for this community of students and families. So thank you for that. We have been doing our bond engagement, listen and learn sessions. We've kind of completed those. We had 15 or 16. I lost count at some point. I wanted to thank again Brick and the district team for all of their work organizing them and also to the community members and staff members who came to those to share with us their thoughts. We are moving to design committees next. I'd like to encourage anyone and everyone to apply. Information is on our website, please. If you'd like to get involved in the kind of the design work of both, not just Dundee, but we also have significant projects happening at Edwards and at the high school and then at every other school. There are multiple things happening, so we will have some design opportunity, design committee opportunities for everyone. So please, if you are interested in that, it's actually really kind of nerdy and kind of fun. So I would encourage you to get involved with that. And then finally, I wanted to follow up a little bit last time from National Women's Month, of course. I talked about Beverly Cleary. She did pass away about five days ago at the age of 104. And while she lived most of her life in Carmel, California, something that I failed to mention last time was that she was actually born here in Yamhill County. Now, it was in McMinnville, as that was probably the only local hospital. I'm sure she would have chosen Providence, Newburgh, had we had Providence, Newburgh at that time. But she lived in rural Yamhill County until about age six, when she moved to Portland. She said she always missed living in the country, and I can understand why. So one more piece to this, which I thought was the poignant part about the impact schools have on people and somebody who is, of course, as prolific as Ms. Cleary. She said that the adjustment from living in the country to the city was very difficult. She struggled in school. In first grade, her teacher placed her in a group of struggling readers. So as you probably know, some of them, they were sorted into the bluebirds, the redbirds, and the blackbirds. She was a blackbird, and that, of course, was, if you were a blackbird, you were basically disgraced. So she wanted to read, but somehow could not. With some work, she eventually learned to read. She did eventually find books boring, though, because of the stories that were kind of simple and surprising and wondered why authors didn't write with maybe more humor or about ordinary people. Long story, even longer, by sixth grade, a teacher finally suggested that maybe she should become a children's writer based upon essays that she had written for class assignments. So all of that work and struggle through working with teachers and assistants in her public school. Of course, she became a prolific writer. So just wanted to say farewell and R.I.B. to Beverly Cleary, passed away on the 25th this week at 104 years old, but one of our own locals here. So that's all I have for you.
Well, thank you. All right, we're ready to go do a little bit of business on the consent agenda. If you've had a chance to look it over, board members, do you have anything? Are we ready to approve it?
I'm glad that the Newburgh School District Board of Directors approved the consent agenda as presented.
I second.
Thank you. All right, are we ready to vote? Everybody in favor of approving the consent agenda, raise your hand, please?
Aye.
Yeah, you'll have to say something. Did you say you approved, Brian? I didn't. I talked to... Okay, thank you, Brian. Okay, good. Now the reports and presentations, and we're going to start with school in-person update from the superintendent.
All right, thank you. So as you probably know, we've returned with all K-5 students this week to hybrid, those who have been coming back. It has gone very well. You know, the little bit of the circus between pick-up and drop-off and working out all those little kinks as people kind of get in and out of the building. But I've gotten to see several photos and heard some great stories of those all going very well. So I want to thank the families for being patient, the kids for wearing their masks, and our staff for working so hard to get them in and get them organized. It's been really, I'm sure, wonderful for our staff to be able to get to make new, new relationships as now they're, for many of them, seeing them for the very first time in person. And of course, our kindergarten and truly our first-grade students are really having their first experience in the building, those who are coming. So just a nice update. Continuing on then, we, as I've said before, we will be bringing our secondary students back on April 19th. That will be the beginning of the fourth quarter. Along with that return of the secondary students, we will be making a shift to our comprehensive distance learning times, the CDL times. As a reminder, we're having about, we're about 30% of our students are remaining in CDL and about 70% of our students coming back at secondary. So we're going to be shifting the schedule for CDL so it matches our hybrid schedule. And that is, of course, the 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. time that we have. There'll be more information that comes from the district with further details and, of course, from the schools as they're working through schedules. But I did want to alert the public and alert the board, of course, that we are, just as of yesterday, got everything set to move that direction. So that will allow us, of course, to provide more access to electives, more access to the classes that students need for their required classes. That was one of our big challenges by having separate schedules. And so having all of the schedules aligned will allow us to provide more classes and more opportunities to more kids. And again, you'll get more information coming from both the district and your child's school in the coming weeks. Also, just wanted to say that we have been aware, of course, of the changes made by the CDC and subsequently by the ODE and Ready School Safe Learners. Guidance of the change from six feet to three feet, that hasn't changed the guidance for the adults being closer than six feet. So there are some other complications within that. We are exploring what the possibilities could look like in terms of classrooms and bringing back more students. But there are several details that have not, that don't quite work out in the same way. So we'll still work on those, but I did want everyone who has emailed me to tell me that, that yes, we are tracking those details. And we know that's out there, and we will explore the opportunity to do so more of that. But other than that, as I said before, all K-5 are back. Secondary starts on April 19. And we will have a confluence of both the hybrid and the CDL classes happening at the same time so we can offer as many opportunities for students as possible. So with that, I'll take any questions, if there are any, about our return to school. But other than that, that is my update for tonight.
Does anybody have questions from the board? Seems you've got music. Was that you, Dave?
Yeah.
It's okay. Thank you for that report, Joe, and thanks, everybody, for the work that's gone into making this shift. And there's still more work to be done, it sounds like, particularly in the secondary schools, to get us in gear for the start. And I think we'll keep asking for reports on this, since this is a major theme this year.
It is.
Watch. Okay, Nikki, it's time for you. If you're ready to talk, we're running a little ahead of schedule. It's good. You ready to talk about the monthly financial report?
Absolutely. So in the report, it shows that we're looking at, I mean, we always focus on any fund balance. And at this point, for as of the end of February, we're looking at about $10 million, but that's kind of pre-students coming back. So we're going to see an uptick in the sub-costs and transportation and all those pieces over the next few months. So we'll keep an eye on that piece. I added an additional page to your financial reports. And I wanted to do that kind of due to the audit and some questions around how the board can monitor the budget. And so these different sections match up with the budget resolution that you pass initially. So it'll help to monitor where we are with expenditures in relation to what you approved at the beginning of the year. So I put that back in there. It's very, it's just a very high level. But these are the pieces that you need to watch in order to meet budget guidelines. And if you look at the capital projects, and I have that out there, but at the end of February, we hadn't spent anything out of that. And also, we had not received our bond funding at that point. So March 3rd, we received all that money. And so next month, you'll start to see those numbers change with the 162 million that came in. And since that time, we have pushed it back out to investments. We have a schedule based on the estimated spending over the next several years. The only downfall to all that is they are not earning anything. And so the rates are so low that we kind of held off a couple of days, hoping things would bounce back up. They did not bounce very much. So we haven't been some short-term options. So hopefully, if there's some recovery, we can push them back out into some longer-term things. So anyway, we have, we have help with that. We're using Piper's investment team to help watch all that. And we're working with Zion Bank because the pool does not hold, will not hold over $51 million. So we're having to move that between several different places in order to meet our requirements as far as keeping it safe and keeping it insured. Let's see, what are the pieces? Right now, we're also in the process of looking at, or starting the process of looking at our SFR3 funding and applying for that and coming up with a plan to use that money, that's additional federal funding. They have a lot of strings associated with it. A lot of it is for credit recovery, a lot of it is for enrichment activities. So we're just starting the process of aligning that and applying for that and coming up with a plan for that spending. We are also working on the budgeting. We have our staffing estimates out there, and so we'll be in the next week or two ramping up, kind of defining and zeroing in on the budget estimates for next year. I think that's about, let's see, that's about it. In the report, let's see, I talked about estimates. Oh, there it is. I also talked about the state school fund estimate. We did get an updated estimate for 2122. And based on our current, can you hear me?
Everybody's frozen but me. Yeah, fantastic.
We can hear you, Nikki.
Oh, okay. It's usually me freezing, so that's good. It's not this time.
Greg's going across for tech support, so you should be okay.
Okay. So just the other thing to point out, and I put it in the notes a little bit, was around our enrollment. So 2122 estimate came out. Based on that, we could be looking at a $4 million decrease in funding. But I say that in that it is a very fluid number at this point because we don't know how many students will return in the fall. So that, I feel like, is kind of worst-case scenario. We're very hopeful that many students, if in the fall, we're hopeful that students will be coming back. I'm a good number of those students, hopefully, will be returning to us and we'll adjust that number. But in my budgeting process, I will be looking at kind of worst-case scenario. So we're prepped for that, which might not be popular, but I would prefer to be safer with that. And so we could work through that in the budget process where that needs to land based on additional information that we receive in the next couple of months. So are there any questions?
Hey, Nikki, what would be like a worst-case scenario numbers, students didn't return?
Worst-case scenario as far as what?
Like, I mean, do you have a number in your head about how many kids, if they didn't come back, it would be rough?
Well, right now, we're down, I believe, just over 400 kids. And so that's why we're looking at, you know, at the worst case, about a $4 million hit to our SSF. And also, their budgeting at, the governor's budget is at $9.1 billion, which is the same as the current year. So if you bring that across, that does not cover any roll-up costs. So if that is what is passed, we will be taking a hit on roll-up costs and everything going into the next biennium. I know we'll be advocating, everybody will be advocating for a higher number, and usually we come in somewhere in between. So I do expect to be above that a little bit. But where that actually lands, you know, it's a little early to really know and get a good feeling on what's going to happen there. But yeah.
These kids got to land somewhere. I mean, they can't all just...
Right, right. So we do, we do expect a good portion to return. It just depends, you know, how many have had to make a switch right now and actually like the fit. And, you know, whatever they're doing at this point, if it's working for them, will they come back? And that's what we don't know. I'm assuming a good portion will come back, but, you know, I would, I would hate to budget that everybody's returning and then end up with a big problem. So we'll probably end up somewhere in the middle of that and just try to be as safe as we can be and, yeah, and go from there.
Other people...
What was that?
I was just going to ask if other people had questions.
Okay. I was waiting for your question, Ron.
I'll have one in a minute, but I want to see if anybody else has any. Okay, let me ask mine. I actually have two.
Okay.
Maybe, I'm not sure what might have preceded me returning. I came to set this up in the boardroom, so I would not have this problem of cutting out, and it has not worked, so I apologize. The report said, the preliminary said that the estimating the current any fund balance at $10.2 million, roughly. But then you say we will, you think we'll owe back to the state over the next, for the last year. And for 2021 and 1920, I didn't know we had to, I think you meant 2019, 2020. But so that, those obligations might add up to a million dollars. Is that already reflected in the $10 million, or does that take, come out of the $10 million?
That would take out of it. And that's why I want to put that there. The one, the one for the current year, 2021, could still move a little bit because the estimates will keep changing and stuff. But the 1921, I feel like is pretty solid, even though we don't have the final numbers. We should have those pretty quickly. But, but yeah, so that impacts that number. So it looks, you know, it's a great number, but there's these other big chunks that might be applied against it, yes.
So that cuts, right now, you have a projected June ending funding balance at 9341, plus you have the 102. The 9341 is still a little high, based on this. These came out by 100 or 100,000 or so. And you mentioned the sub-costs that we might incur. Those are probably hard to predict, but do you have any kind of range?
You know, with the limited time we have back our sub-costs in the past, and because we're still be carrying some CDL pieces to it, it won't be like full sub-costs. And before, they would run at about $140,000 a month. So I'm expecting that probably worst-case scenario would be maybe $80,000 a month.
So altogether, that would put us down right close to $9 million in the ending funding, which is still over our policy, but yeah, just want to keep tabs on it.
Yeah, but looking ahead to next year, if we do have that reduction, you want to have a little bit of that piece or that, the ending fund balance, you need a little bit higher so we can budget next year and hopefully be able to cover everything, so.
I totally agree with that. You said the SF3 funding, did I get that right, is...
SFR3, yep.
SFR3. SFR3, what did you think?
E-S-S-E-R.
Okay, now I get it. E-S-S-E-R. Is that going to be separately reported from the rest of the budget? Will we get reports specifically on that funding?
Well, it'll be in the grant funding. If you want specifics on that, I can report specifically on that because now we have three different chunks, obviously. We have SFR1, that was about a $601,000, that's pretty much spent. We have an SFR2, and now we have been told about SFR3 with different strings. So within the accounting system, we have to keep all those separate. As far as the way the reports look, they're going to be under the 200 fund and be rolled up. So if you want kind of specific information about what we're really doing with that, we can do that. A little more detailed kind of narrative on that as we move forward with those. as we move forward with those. But when you look at the numbers, they're gonna be rolled up by one thousands, two thousands, and three thousands functions.
Yeah, right. So I, you know, I wouldn't mind, but that's really a board kind of feeling we need to get. Does anybody else have any feeling about whether you'd like to see that reported separately? Just doesn't excite people very much.
Well, I'm part of it is, I'm not sure. I think it might be, the plan might be ran by the board at some point anyway, when we get there, but
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
To look at all the requirements.
Yeah. So, I mean, we should probably just keep, be keeping track that that money, what's happening with that money, we need to know at least, so.
Right, right.
So I, some way, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm not insisting on that, but if it, and I don't want to put a lot of extra work on you, but it would be nice, I think, to have that separately reported.
Yeah, yeah, you can definitely speak to that, I'm sure to be helpful, because I think people are curious, because they keep hearing about this extra money and all this kind of thing. They don't want to know what's going on with it, and that's not a problem. Like, I can speak to that.
Brian, I can see everybody else's body language, and they're not very upset at this one way or another. Do you have any feelings on it?
My body language is essentially the same.
Okay, I don't know what you do. Uh, we'll let you and Joe sort of sort of that out for now, and if we get antsy, maybe other people will start to worry about it as well.
Perfect.
All right, thank you. Anybody else with questions about finance?
Ron, I thought that was pretty exciting, the way you handled that whole thing.
Oh, sure. You do sound very excited about that either, really, Dave, so I'll take your word for it. Greg, are you ready for the bond update?
Yes, absolutely. Um, the construction bond that we passed in November is a really exciting project. This is the biggest bond in um Newburgh School District history, and uh all of us a- at the district team are working on this in some capacity, and I'm sort of doing a uh getting everybody connected role, and so I thought it would be easiest for me to kind of sort of give you an update from time to time on what's going on. Um, there's always a lot going on. We have a bond management team meeting every Friday for an hour and a half, where we kind of pull together all kinds of folks from Brick and from the district to keep updates, and so uh, you, you're just gonna get really the thirty-three-thousand-foot view, just to get an idea of what's going on, so that you're aware, and if there's ever more questions you have, you can direct them my way, and I'll make sure and um get those answers for you, or get you to the people that will have the answers. So uh, as Joe said earlier, we have had sixteen community staff and student input sessions that were conducted over a three-week period, and that gave really valuable input uh into this process that is being collated by Brick Architecture for Use in the design phase of each of the projects that we have going on. And so we're now in the process uh of recruiting staff, students, and community members to serve on design teams for each of the major projects. And what these teams will do are the nitty-gritty work of meeting a couple times a month for six to eight months. And what they're gonna do is ensure that the designs that are brought by the architects are matching up with the feedback that is given through the process that we've gone through, uh as well as refining and making the best possible buildings that we can. And uh, want to reiterate that each school will be touched in some way by this bond. Uh, will have improved entry and access and security, as well as additions of flexible learning spaces. Those things will occur at every building in the district. And Dundee Elementary, as we've heard quite a bit about tonight, will be entirely replaced, and just um you know, it's not my place to respond to the board comments, um to the comments that are made to the board, but just to be very clear that in all of our discussions, we're, we're very aware of the importance of the park to Dundee and and every plan that we are making and all the contingencies are centered around how do we make sure that uh at the very least, we preserve park space in Dundee and maybe even potentially make it better. So that's uh what we're doing in that process. Edwards Elementary is gonna see substantial improvements throughout. Uh, replacing the aging cafeteria and the portable classrooms will be replaced with permanent classrooms, as that school has grown a lot over the years with the dual-language program that is there. The Springbrook Building, which houses Catalyst High School, will be expanded, and the high school is gonna see substantial renovations to the career technical education and sci- as well as the science classrooms. And these all are gonna be designed in response to the feedback we received from our diverse community, and I really am convinced, after listening to this process, that the way Brick is doing this, making sure student voice is heard, staff voice is heard, community is heard, diverse voices are heard, that this is gonna make our buildings better for everybody. Um, there's gonna be places where every student feels at home, and they have what they need to succeed academically. Um, the other thing we wanted to let you know as a, as a public is that the district has hired Cornerstone Management Group to be our owner representative. Uh, they do not do the actual construction, but they know and understand construction, especially a lot better than a bunch of educators. And they are the project planners who will keep the district's interests in mind to make sure that all these projects are completed on time and on budget and with the highest quality. Uh, they're already at work, uh getting bids on various maintenance projects and various studies that are needed for all of these construction projects that are happening. Uh, and finally, there's a lot of work that's been done over the last couple of weeks on defining the scope of work on deferred maintenance. Um, we have eighteen million dollars in the bond that goes to maintenance that is deferred, the big stuff that just can't be done on a year-to-year basis. And uh Larry Hampton, our operations coordinator, has worked a lot with Brick Architecture and Cornerstone Management Group, uh getting bids, figuring out all that needs to be done, prioritizing, figuring out all the different things, which, which buildings and maintenance makes sense to do later in the project, because we're already been doing work there, what can be done now. And uh, so some of the projects that are under consideration to be done this summer, which is a really tight timeframe, it's really great that with an election in November, that we can actually have some things visible and to be seen the summer after that. And some of the things under consideration to be done this summer are some HVAC work across the district, um, some replacement of some kitchen equipment in various buildings, um, replacing and adding electrical generators that will make our uh buildings more resilient in the case of power outages and disasters. Uh, and also repaving the parking lot at Shaillan Valley Middle School and Creator Elementary. I want to reiterate that the sentence started with some of the projects under consideration to be done this summer. That's not a promise that all of those are happening, but I want you to know that those are the things we are looking at um to wrap our hands around and be able to get some, some things happening this summer that everybody can see uh that the bond funds are at work. So that's the update for tonight, and um can have any questions or anything that Joe may want to add that I may have forgotten?
Yeah, Greg, I had a couple of questions there. On a tough side of that, with Cornerstone's a company that's gonna overlook, like you said, um, in the past with a lot of our bond things, we've struggled in that area. I mean, I'm glad we're doing that, getting those guys on that, because um like you said, educators don't always they educate, and these builder guys, you know, that's their, their specialty, but we haven't always really had good follow-up on that stuff. I mean, are we gonna have somebody, you know, a way to check and balance even those guys, so we just, you know, give the, the the community, you know, exactly how much money we're putting out there for this stuff, because it yeah, if we're just building a shed or a house, I mean, you know, you, you talk to the city workers and things go wrong all the time.
Yep, absolutely. So there's a bunch of checks and balances that happen. We've hired this company and and um when we did their interview and checked all their references, they have been involved in projects, millions and millions of dollars of school projects all around us. They've worked in Clackamas, uh North Clackamas District, they work in Tigert Walton, they've worked in Sherwood, uh and they've made all of these things happen. Um, they've overseen all this stuff and they've delivered, and that's really why we went with this company. We felt really good about their track record and what they could bring. And so Casey Cunningham is the main project manager who, um, what they keep saying is, you know, he's gonna be like an employee, we're gonna see him a lot, because he's gonna be on site. Um, and so we feel really good about this company. There also will be the development uh soon of a citizen oversight committee, and they're completely separate, made up of citizens and stuff, that will be just looking at all of this stuff, and so they're kind of the ones who, like you said, are, are also watching this company. We have a great relationship with Brick Architecture and love working with them. Um, but it's kind of a three-way street now, where everybody's kind of holding each other accountable, where um Cornerstone is working with Brick to make sure that Brick is following our interests and, and um all of that stuff's going on really well. So we're feeling really good about the team we're developing and, and the way there'll be a lot of checks and balances to make sure stuff comes through.
Um, no, I appreciate that. Thanks, Greg. Uh, the second question I had was on, I'm really glad we're doing the C V parking lot in Crater. I mean, I live over in that area, and it definitely needs to be done. For a future item for you, Dr. Joe, to talk about, because I know you guys never have anything to do, is um you know, that, those softball fields are used massively by people outside our community, and the wear and tear is, is, is huge. Um, and that's Park and Rec. You know, I think that'd be something down the road. I know this time it would be too late. But, you know, as we're discussing all these things back and forth with Park and Rec about Billock Park and all those kind of things, I think it, it would uh be something we should put in the file that, that they should help on, because you know, that place is packed, uh at least Saturday, Sunday, every weekend for nine months of the year, if not more. And it's always, you know, people come out of town, you know, wear and tear of everything there, so.
I think that would be, that, that's an expensive project, but anyway, that's all I.
Yeah, and just, just so you know, that, that, those field are actually owned by CPRD. Those are not district fields, the softball fields behind uh C V M S and kind of between Crater, so, so yeah, CPRD actually owns those, uh owns those fields. But yeah, there's a, I think there's a lot of opportunity to do that through, and, and thanks for actually asking the question. I'm glad we could talk about the bond oversight committee, because that that will get spun up here pretty soon, and, and you're right, Dave, we are educators, that's why we're, that's why we hired a company that knows how to manage construction projects, because that's their expertise. Um, we checked with lots and lots of districts, even though they made it through our interview process, we called, I don't know how many people around us, just to make sure that we were choosing the right people and that, that this would, they would be bringing this uh on time and under budget, which, you know, will be our mantra all the time, so. But I appreciate those questions, because I, I want the public to know that, that we are very serious about that.
And, and just to go deeper on that, Dave, we um, you know, we obviously checked the references they provided, but then we went and looked up where else they had worked, and we called those districts as well. So we made sure to like, we wanted to, we wanted to make sure that they were gonna do a good job, and, and everything was really great.
Well, I, I, I guess I was just saying, because I just know, like, you know, going through all the bond updates at the high school that we went through for all the years, it's looking towards the end, when everybody's just tired of building stuff, and everybody's tired of walking on plywood, and everybody just wants it to get done, and that seemed to be kind of like when the mistakes would happen, and, and again, that happens just if, if you see a house being built, you know, uh, something just doesn't quite get fixed, and the punch list doesn't get taken care of, and and I know that happened before, so that's the reason I was bringing it up. So thanks for the update.
You bet.
So I'm back. Can you guys hear me? I had another stopout. I'm on my phone now. I'm tired of my computer breaking down. Uh, anybody else have questions about the bond update? I'm assuming companies like Brick, this is what I hope, companies like Brick have uh a real interest in making school district happy, because if they don't, they get a reputation of not serving the, to school districts well, they lose their business. I don't expect them to act as sort of uh advocates to us for the construction companies. I expect them to act as advocates for us to the construction companies. I hope I said that right, uh that they're working for us. Is that the report that you got, that their interests were aligned with the district rather than the companies they were hiring?
Uh, yes, and actually, the feedback that we got is just in general, not about Brick specifically, but in general, what every district said is it's really important to have that cornerstone type of group who's doing the project manager, because whoever's designing, whatever architecture firm is doing, they um, you know, they want to build the really cool stuff and do whatever they can and, and have it be, have it come in, in there, and so you need the the owner's representative to be there to say, hey, let's look really carefully at the budget, let's make sure we're sticking in and and let's make sure that every dollar that the taxpayers have given is going to the right thing. And so it's not a case of, of so much the architect, from whoever it is, siding with the construction, but maybe just wanting to overspend your budget because of cool things that you want to do. And not that, not that, again, not that we had that feedback about Brick or anything, but just in general of, of that's why you have kind of the three things coming together.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Just a quick comment.
Yeah.
Um, I'm really happy to see how passionate uh you talked about this update. Um, the bond was something that I was really passionate about, so I'm happy that the work is continuing with that passion. Thank you.
Thanks, Enes.
All right, let's uh, that's it. Uh, Luke, are you ready for your technology report?
I am, thank you. I'll try to share my screen here, if the host would allow me to do that.
It's not me, I think.
That might be Greg, and he's uh give me rights for that. I get that he doesn't trust me with sharing my screen, though. It makes sense.
There you go, my bad.
All right, pick the right desktop here, and we should be up and running. Are you all seeing a uh Newburgh Technology slide at this point?
Yes, sir.
Fantastic. Well, yeah, thank you all for um having me here tonight to talk about technology in Newburgh. This is our annual report, where we share about what's been going on with technology in the school district, and um I think that doing this in March this year is pretty timely, and that reflecting back on the last year um really gives us a chance to look at this unique year that we've had, which has been pretty wild, with a pandemic and a change to almost every aspect of how we do technology and how we deploy it and how we run it. So I have to speak first and foremost about these five individuals who, you know, I, I heard from a lot of school districts around us, um just how rough this year was um technology-wise, and for us, you, it was a lot of work. It was, there were a lot of curves thrown our way, but um this is the all-star team, and they just handled it incredibly well. I think since I last um shared a technology report with you all, we've had an addition to the team, and that's Christian, who is our bilingual technology support specialist. And we are super grateful that he's joined the team, and he has been so critical this last year, just answering phone calls left and right, in English and in Spanish, and um handling all kinds of questions, um with just a lot of poise and um really a lot of uh reassurance to a lot of people who are trying to help grandkids with devices they've never seen before, he's the whole range of things, and so we're really glad that he joined us, and he's been a great addition. And um the, the rest of the team, uh I think I've talked about in the past, but um, you know, Jamie and Ken have both been around a long time. You can see on the timeline there, you know, Ken started in nineteen ninety-nine, and Jamie followed the year after. Shafraz since two thousand twelve, and then Tony since two thousand fifteen. And, you know, kind of thinking about how we've been able to handle just so many problems that have been thrown at us this last year. So many of the solutions were already in place because of work we were doing in two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, even what we did in, you know, two thousand seventeen with the full implementation of one-to-one devices and sending them home. That put us well ahead of the curve compared to a number of districts who either didn't have one-to-one technology already, or had never sent devices home with students, and so we really had a lot of those solutions in place and ready to go, which made um this last year doable. Um, I'm not gonna recap the whole timeline, but it's there for you. I think I've talked through it in the past. You know, if anyone does have questions about any of it, maybe I can answer those at the end, but um really, this last year has meant um a lot of focus on um getting devices home with kids and um trying to get our students' families connected, and it's uh meant an addition of um hundreds of hotspots, eight hundred hotspots, which um just incredible, wild numbers we've seen this year. I do, I have this infographic that shows our data, our numbers from the before times, pre-COVID times. And, you know, we were doing um just a lot of work, you know, devices, uh network, two thousand help test tickets a year, and then COVID happened, and all that changed. And I think I have one extra slide in here that I didn't put in the packet, just because I thought it was kind of uh applicable here. It's a little guy talking about numbers going up, and he says, It's a little guy talking about numbers going up and he says, you know, when metrics go up, the, the person presenting always says, this was a result of my actions. And then when metrics go down, the person presenting always says, this was a result of many external factors. And I think for us this last year, our metrics have gone up considerably. And this was not because we chose to do anything here. This was a result of an external factor, a big external factor, which was COVID. And so that COVID shift meant some big changes in our numbers. We shifted from having Chromebooks in classrooms primarily to having them at home. So 4,400 Chromebooks went home with students. A number of those students and families didn't have a stable, reliable internet connection. And so we have provided 800 hotspots for students and families. And I just want to say thanks to the cities of Newburgh and the city of Dundee, who both very generously shared their coronavirus relief fund grant money with the school district to pay for those hotspots. And so, you know, we were able to supplement the funding that we have with, with their funds and make that happen. Moving to the upper right corner, we did some estimating. We ran some math to try to figure out just how many virtual class sessions have happened over this last year. And we think we're right about the 200,000 mark at this point. So that's a lot of Google meets and, you know, we had a few hiccups along the way initially getting it all figured out and settled. But at this point, we have a lot of staff who are just experts at running class over Google Meet and making great connections with kids that way. Helped us ticket wise, you know, over the last year from March 2020 to March 2021, we had 3,675 tickets and, you know, usually we'd have about 2,000. And that's not counting phone calls, which we haven't been tracking in that system, but nearly double, not quite double, the number of help test tickets. And then yes, last but not least, we did have unfortunately one charger that got chewed by a pet bunny. We hope and believe the bunny is okay, but we, we recommend carrots and not chargers for bunnies. Looking ahead to the next year, we have even more to do. You know, if you think back to that timeline that we had, that I had up on the screen, many of our devices that we are using currently were purchased at the end, toward the end of that last bond. And that was about five years ago. And so many of those have hit that five-year kind of end of life moment where we need to move them off our, out of production and replace them with something new. And so the first big project we're taking on is replacements for our iPads at kindergarten, first and second grade. And we actually have a thousand iPads right now onsite that a, a team has been working on today even. And made really good progress there. And we're hoping that even though the shipment was delayed on those because of some supply chain issues, we're really hoping we can get those out to our students and teachers. Maybe not the end of this week, hopefully early next week for them. And then Chromebook wise, we have about 4,000 that will reach their end of life time towards the beginning of next school year. And, and looking back at the supply chain issues we're seeing, we really need to get those ordered right about now to make sure that they can show up for the summer so that we can get them all set up to be ready for the fall and to replace those. We also have a lot of staff laptops that are aging out as well, including Dr. Derek Browns, which you heard about a time or two ago. And we'll get those replaced. We've got many of those ordered in, in the district office already. And we're starting to, to get those cycled through and replaced. We also have a number of projects involving our network infrastructure. We need updated wireless access points, wall cabling, fiber runs, switches, servers, firewalls and more. And so we're going to keep Ken Cohen, our network manager, very busy and Jamie McParland, who's doing a lot of that work as well. We've also made really good progress already on adding security cameras around the district and we'll continue to work on that project. And all told, we have about 120 security cameras added. Either you, over the last year or into the next year, it kind of let, those two years combined will involve nearly 120 security cameras added. Those are kind of the big things that we are, we're looking at at this point. I have kept it hopefully short, sweet and to the point. And I am so happy to answer questions at this point. I'm going to stop sharing my screen so I can see you all again and see what, what you might have question wise.
Hey Luke, it's Dave. Just on a, please tell them, uh, all my years there, Ken, Conan, Shafraz were amazing. Those guys were so good in so many different ways. I mean, you were all right. You're okay, but those guys.
I was mediocre at best. They really make me look good. If anything good happens to that department, absolutely.
They, they were just so, so good. Built me out. Staff feel. How much does iPad and a Chromebook cost?
Yeah. So we do get bulk education pricing discounts. And an iPad these days is coming in under 300. So there's a bit of a deal there for us. The additions there that we need to add on are cases. And then we have a fee that we pay for remote management of those so that we can have some tools so that if something's going wrong with an iPad, Christian can, you know, right there on the phone with someone, run some things to fix their iPad remotely. So it comes in a little over 300 at that point, but right around there per iPad. Chromebook is a little bit less expensive, but there's also a Google management license fee as part of that. The ones that we were getting about a year ago, we're coming in around 200. Our latest quotes for those though, we've really seen a price increase. There's also a little bit of a hardware increase that's gone along with that. And we think we're seeing that because many of the Chromebooks that districts were using for COVID, they found were just not able to handle Zoom and Google Meet very well. The ones that we had were actually okay, but it looks like across the board, they've kind of increased their hardware specifications. So we're seeing more like $250 per Chromebook. It is pretty normal at this point. We do, we have quotes and bids out with a number of companies. And we've, I think I've tested something like 20 different Chromebooks at this point to try to find the right one for the next few years. So we're doing a lot of work to figure out what the best deal is, but also that gets us the kind of quality we need to last well. They definitely make some cheaper Chromebooks, but that would keep Shafraz and Christian up all night, just repairing Chromebooks if we went with those models. So we've got to find the, the right middle ground on those.
No, thanks Luke.
Yeah.
Luke, this is Rebecca. Were we able to supply hotspots and Chromebooks and iPads for every student in the district?
Yes. And so yes, we were able to supply them for anyone who wanted one, anyone who needed one. We did have some students and families who, you know, maybe they had a really nice laptop already at home. And that works fine for our systems. So they just chose not to have a district Chromebook at home as well. Yeah, we made that commitment that any student who needed a device, we would get them one. Yeah. And that anyone who needed a hotspot, we get them one. Yeah.
Good. So, and we heard from every student, they were able to get in and utilize the system.
Yeah. You know, initially, you know, a year ago, when all of this started happening, there were some families where we really struggled to get them connected. You know, some were on tops of, you know, mountains that weren't reachable or out in the country, you know. And we, we figured out some tricks. Um, you know, actually we had, we had some staff who went out and had to drive out to places and figure out which power line, which pole, what pole number was on the house, you're right outside the house. And then we could actually call PGE and they could tell us what company had fiber lines closest to that pole. And then we, we tried to work out some deals there to get them connected that way. There were just some too where, you know, T-Mobile didn't work, but Verizon did. And so we were trying different hotspots in different locations. So we had to use an amalgam of solutions. But by the end we got almost everyone connected. There are a few that we just never were able to get connected. But we did have some really generous community partners who opened up spaces in town where they could bring their kids in to get, to get on the internet if needed. So I think we figured out a way for just about everyone. Yeah.
Thank you.
I have a question for you.
Yeah.
So we kind of, I, I think most places sort of roll out the updates. They do some one year and some another year, but it looks like we're doing kind of all at once. And that's just because of bond money being available. Is that, am I reading that right?
Yeah. You know, ideally we would have this kind of sustainable funding cycle, which if you've been around long enough, which Ron, you have, you've heard me talk about how we would love to have a budget where that amount was just built in every year. So we could do, you know, if we're on a four-year cycle, we'd have a fourth of them replaced every year. If we're on a five-year cycle, we'd have a fifth replaced every year. What's really cool about this year, and I think unique to Newburgh School District is for the first time in my history as a tech person, I had the superintendent approach me and say, why aren't we doing this this way? So it's a really great thing to be in Newburgh and have a superintendent who, you know, has a, a past life as a tech director. Who knows how important that is. So I think we actually have a meeting on the calendar to figure out, you know, is there a way to do this and start this process where we can switch to a, a stable funding model where we're not reliant on bond funding? You know, I know we, we really pieced it all together with different budgets and solutions over the years to kind of get where we are now. But it, it is at the point where we're pretty reliant on this. So we should probably do some budget work. Much to Nikki's chagrin, I'm sure, to, to add that budget line in there.
Do we need to have the budget start next year or are we okay for a couple of years?
I, I think that's the conversation that a few of us are going to have. I think it's early next week, maybe later this week. I can't remember when we're having that meeting. But yeah, we, we do need to make a plan for that. And, and that transition will be probably over a couple of years that we do something like that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? I don't know if you noticed, but I've been switching back and forth between my computer and my phone for video. I'm using my phone for audio. I've, I'm trying, I'm trying out for a position in your IT squad at some point.
You know, I've been noticing that and I've been thinking about how we probably need to go find you a device downstairs and hand it to you. I wish I was over there right now. I have been feeling good though that Joe and Greg, who are both at the district office have stayed on and stayed stable. So it's not the district internet. It must be a device. So that's something that we should help you out with though.
Uh, I'm okay for now. Anybody else have questions? Okay, we've arrived at where the break was in our schedule. The next thing is to review this goal to the strategic plan. Do we want to go to the next step or, or do we want to have the break early? What are you, what's the board's pleasure here? And at this point I need to change things so I can see everybody. Hang on. Everybody but Brian can show me with their body language what they need to do. Bob is not squirming. He seems to be okay. How's everybody else?
I would go for a break.
Okay. One person wants a break. We need to take a break. So we'll take our break now. It's scheduled to be five minutes long. Let's make it to eight. I'm going to give you eight minutes, 8:30. Don't abuse this license now. Be back at 8:30. Thank you. So I'm hoping we'll get started in one minute if people can steer their way back in the next minute.
I'm back.
Thanks, Brian.
You bet.
All right, if those of you who are Bob or. Let's see, who else do I not see? I guess Bob's all it. One, two, three, four, one, two, three, four, five. I see all five of you as much as I can. Great. I think we're ready to get started again. Is Joe? I can't see Joe. There he is. Okay, good. Now we're, that's Joe's going to be on now to talk about strategic plan goal two. Ready, Joe?
I am. Thank you. Go ahead and pull. Okay. Thank you. I would like to just continue on what we talked about before. We are sharing. Been sharing some of the progress with our strategic plan that we did create, believe it or not, nearly three years ago. We're still in value one, which is about enhancing the student experience. Back to, just to remind you, we have kind of three of our core values, the enriching the student experience. Stewarding our resources and cultivating community partnerships. Tonight, we'll be talking a little bit about the enhanced learning and development section of that. So again, this goal states that we want to enhance student learning and development through the arts, professional and technical opportunities, which are CTE, extracurricular activities and enrichment experiences. And so as part of this process, I went out and asked our principals over the course of a few weeks to put together some of the progress that we have made in each one of these goals along the way. And so you'll kind of see them a bunch together in no particular order. Occasionally there are some listed that have a school's name next to them if they were very specific about that school. It also does not mean that other schools are not doing the same thing. So I just want to be clear about that. One of the strategies then underneath this goal was to offer and expand the diversity of experiences in the K-12 curriculum, both electives and in core classes. Develop enrichment and extension opportunities, including extracurriculars and after-school activities. Ensure that students have hands-on learning and pathways to explore their interests. And then finally, to inculcate structures for students to be empowered owners of their learning. So in our elementary schools, for under this goal, some of the activities that have been going on, of course, some of these are in the before times and then others, of course, have been able to happen during the pandemic. So we used to and beforehand and will continue again in the future, attending outdoor school annually. That's quite an experience. I know that a hundred years ago when I was in fifth grade, I also attended outdoor school and it's, it's a thing that we really enjoy. And so we have not been able to do that for the last little while. So we're hopeful that that will come back in this coming school year. Fourth grade students have also done biz down, which teaches students practical skills and business math and other kinds of job-related things. So everything from a CEO to an assistant to business owners and things like that. It's actually a fairly exciting thing and the kids really get into it and learn some things they might want to do in the future with that opportunity. Additionally, we have local field trips that we take, science, art, history. We went to the GFU, the George Fox University Symphony. That's always a big, a big outing and really appreciated that we get to go over and take over the auditorium and have quite the performance. Over at Crater, as I said before, they have an honor choir and an afternoon robotics club. We have art lessons happening in the library. We also have additional things. I know Ron, you were a big fan of the Night of the Notables. Over at Dundee, we got country reports, all kinds of things that we do in the evening as well. We do have some intramural sports. And then there is a Wednesday morning chess club. I'm not sure which one that one is, but I better not show up because I would just not look good for me to get beaten so handily probably by a third grader. So that also happens in most schools. We, you've probably seen also, I've been fortunate to see the salmon trout release. Pumpkin patch kinds of things. We partnered, of course, with the Salem Cultural Center on arts, arts activities. During this pandemic time, putting data kits and some other things at the kindergarten level. We do have some after-school music things, even during the CDL time that, that we've been in for the last several months. They will take part in both ukulele and guitar classes. And then additionally, some of the things that our partnerships really allowed us to do, bringing in students from the GFU and the Big Bruin Program. Of course, that was from pre-pandemic time. We have the Ramp Program for reading and math. Music programs partnering with SMART. So let's start making a reader today. We have some of those both liter support as well as getting books. And there are several elementary schools where they'll have a SMART program that is after-school for kids to have an adult to read with them and to them. In our secondary schools, we continued and I know you've been part of seeing some of those courses come to you as part of the, the development of additional opportunities for students. Some new courses that we recently approved include Makerspace, mobile app development. Our woods programs, I think you probably remember that one of the conversations around IDS, the integration design studio was actually to have students have some experience in woods, learning to cut and hammer and nail and put together in other such kinds of ways. So we've added some of those kind of things. Sports, literature and composition, some AV production. Maybe we can even talk to that AV production group into coming and filming our school board member meetings when we come back in person and we do our kind of hybrid setup. We've added also something called geometry and construction. I think that for many folks, sometimes geometry seems very abstract. And so of course, for anybody doing construction, you know, you're using geometry all the time. And so that's kind of an exciting new course to have. And then our, the nursing program, of course, which we have been doing for a little while, and we've had an expansion of that with a large amount of interest, of course. The integrated design studio, which I mentioned before, it's kind of a combination of both language arts and construction. They can build, design and build projects. You know that they've done this work with the tiny home, of course, to help with area housing shortages and they have many other projects on the horizon. Tiger Manufacturing, which actually started up a few weeks ago. They started up a little bit earlier and got to get going during this time period. That is a machine shop that's run by students. They have a student CEO and a student management team that runs the whole operation. And we have, of course, volunteers from A R E Manufacturing that help us run that. And it's a pretty exciting program. And so glad to have that back up right now during, as we come, come out of the pandemic. Additional collaborations and other things that we've been working on, Willam, Promise, which of course you've heard our principal, Tam Arian, speak about before. Collaboration also with Catalyst and NHS to build and share the career pathways between the two schools. A lot of synergies there and a lot of things that are happening at Catalyst and at Newburgh High School. And so we're trying to, to share those, those opportunities so we can not have to reinvent the wheel, the wheel two or three different times to get it right. FFA has been going through a little bit of rebuild. So I think when I arrived, we had lost a long time. FFA teacher. And so we have since then hired someone who has taken over and really done a great job to, to bring back lots of students with that, recruiting new members. Getting ready to compete at regional tournaments. And so we're excited to see our FFA on upswing. It's a pretty incredible program. It's been around a long, long time and Newburgh has always been, had a very strong program. So I'm glad to see that, that doing well. We also have some independent study things. And of course, for those of you who have attended the senior project, the extended application night. I'm looking forward to that coming back. That is quite the evening at Newburgh High School when students are doing, are showing off their projects. So that's, that's pretty fun to see that. We also, of course, have several other after-school activities, student-led groups, voices. Lots of things happening that we try to allow students to, to work within their interests. I know that we've also had some more opportunities on the horizon as we start talking about through our design teams. Making another plug for our bond design teams, as we start reimagining what our CTE space is. The, at Newburgh High School and what kind of opportunities a space could provide for not just the things that we have going on now, but other groups in the future that might be interested in make, being part of the program or being part of an after-school thing as well. Some additional things that, that we have going on. We have created a Makerspace and the library of things is actually in progress. That's happening along with our library services, trying to reimagine again spaces that libraries are great community meeting spaces. And so what other kinds of things can we provide for our students and for the community within our libraries? We have been continuing to work on the product-based learning, some design thinking training. We have lots of work still to do on our proficiency-based teaching and learning. That's something that the board put into policy several years ago, and that is kind of our forward push as we move into the next several years here as we go through our curriculum renewal throughout the subject areas will also be working towards our proficiency-based teaching and modeling. Again, I mentioned before with the bond additional CTE opportunities, we also are part of the larger consortium through the Willamette Career Academy that allows us, that's a new thing that's being launched, of course, in Salem, that allows us to be part of that program and also offer some programs here that students could come from other places within the tri-county area to join us on our campus. And our middle school classes, our middle school schedule does have currently seven periods, which makes it a little bit challenging for some of our students who are in SPED or ELD. They can only take one elective. So we're, we're looking at other opportunities at our middle school level as well. Okay. So again, this goal was about enhancing student learning, development through the arts, professional, technical, extracurricular and enrichment experiences. I do think that we have been doing a really good job in Newburgh. I do think that we have an opportunity to do an even better job, especially with the, some of the remodel happening. Not just at the high school. That's what we're talking about a lot, but also CTE at middle school. And then some of our STEAM opportunities, which we had started to get off the ground before a global pandemic took over. And so we'll be returning to that work. There are dollars available that have been budgeted in the bond to look at the creation or recreation of spaces. Interesting spaces, for lack of a better term, that would allow us to do some of those kinds of things at every school. So looking forward to seeing kind of what that will develop in over time, especially through and within our design committees. And that is all I have for you on that. If we have some questions, but it's just mostly an update. So you can see some of the progress, some of the things that we have been doing during this time and in the last, you know, two and a half years through the strategic plan.
Hey, Joe's Dave.
Hey, Dave.
I agree with Ron that like my kids all went through Dundee, but they went through Night of the Notables. They still to this day drawing that experience. It was incredible. Mary Jane Bachmeier and Bogey Sawyer for years. I mean, I wish all the schools do it. I know they all have their own thing they do, but that, that was an incredible night. And then the outdoor school, I was a forest counselor three times at that and it was phenomenal. Again, teachers did a, but the kids loved it, you know, just.
Yeah.
Those, and all those other things you listed, really exciting. Thank you for FFA too. Really glad that's coming back strong. A lot of kids. To this day, some of the people have been the most successful coming out of Newburgh High School, went through FFA and are in business, you know, in our county. So that's great. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. It's, you know, it's, sometimes I'll ask the question of people, tell me if you can remember what your favorite worksheet was in school.
You want to know?
Wait, no. Do you have one? Favorite worksheet?
Yeah.
Well, you often.
That are central grade school, fifth grade on the nineteen sixty-eight political process with Bobby Kennedy and the whole thing. It was, she was a great teacher. I wish I could see her again sometime.
You know, Dave, you might be the only person I've asked that question of that had a favorite worksheet. So I like that. That's good. That's a, that's a new one.
Not just a coach, I'm not just a sport.
But I also would like to ask them, you know, if you could remember your favorite project from school. And people always have a list of things that they did with their hands or things that they made or things that they were involved in that that they learned from and they can remember. So you know, you mentioned FFA. And a large part of FFA is actually getting up and standing and presenting your ideas, your competition, your things like that. If you're building something in Tiger Manufacturing, if you're building something in elementary school, if you're working on some kind of a project, those are the, the experiences that stick with them. And so the, the goal is how do you do hands-on and then also you know, wrap around all the stuff we're trying to do. So it's, yeah, I'm, I'm happy to see that the, the progress they've made at, at Newburgh High School and the kinds of things they're talking about right now at both middle schools. To continue the work up and of course, all those things that we do at elementary. But yeah, there's a lot of good progress being made and still a long way to go for us. So pretty excited about that.
That's one thing about COVID. I miss the school, the schoolchildren coming and doing their presentation of what, what they're doing in class.
Yeah.
I, I look forward to that coming back to board meetings.
Yeah, me too. Me too.
Other comments or questions?
I have one or two. First question, just briefly, you mentioned the senior projects at the high school in their presentation. That, we missed that stage last year. Is there any chance we're going to have that this year?
You know, I don't have an answer for you, but I will get one for our next meeting to know about it. Yeah. Cause I don't know where we are on that.
Don't know what to do if it's unsafe, but it would be, it would be a mark of coming back if it could happen.
Right.
I really appreciate having all these events and activities listed. I mean, it looks like there's going to be a lot of favorite projects for students in what you've described here. And that gives me at least a richer idea of the, all the things we've been able to innovate and do. Last time I asked about how we're measuring things and we talked about, you know, for achievement, the in, in, that's the word I want. Incontinuity. It's not really much of a word of the tests that we're using that they, we change them and then we've had interruptions and stuff. But still, that's a way, a way to measure some kinds of. How do you measure if you're succeeding at this, these goals? These are all really, I mean, I mean, is there a way of sort of measuring from one era to another, whether we're improving? And how, how would you design that? And are we measuring that? So that we can start to get baseline.
Yeah. So a couple of things on this, and this is where it's very hard to make a direct measurement of how much people enjoy school to how long they stay in school. Now, there are a lot of studies about people who are disaffected, people who aren't interested in school and, and how their achievement is. I will tell you that if school is a horrible place to be, people don't do as very well, right? So depending upon what they've got. There are some things that, that keep kids in school. And sometimes we talk about sports. Sports is only one of those things. There are many things that keep kids in school. There are some kids who only come to school to be in the ag class because they'll show up to school, they'll come, they'll be there because they have something that hooks them. And I think it's important to remember that every kid is different and they all have different interests. And the more things that we can offer to keep their attention and keep them engaged in school, the better opportunity we have to measure those things. So I don't think you can separate one from the other. I don't think you can also say that because we have IDS, student scores on the state achievement test in English are going up. But I could say that we have, if you look at graduation rates as a, for instance, and I, I don't know if you remember that from two, might've been two report, or two years ago, we did a report, but we showed that the data of students who were CTE concentrators graduated at a far higher rate than those who were not in CTE. And that was, I think frankly, due to interest in school, staying in school, doing their thing because they found something they were passionate about. So I think that there are other indicators we can look at. I will tell you that if we are not able to offer what people are looking for, they will go other places. You know, that's, this whole thing we're talking about, about, you know, having this or not having that. I think we have to try to have as many as possible because we want people to find something that's interesting to them. I had a colleague who moved their family to Newburgh because they heard we had X, Y, or Z program. I didn't want to highlight their programs, but they heard we had a certain program. They came out for that. They actually moved their families. So this is the kind of thing we want because our district doesn't have this, right? So I think, I think it's important to just to keep in mind that hands-on learning provides students with other opportunities they might not normally have. It creates some level of interest. You never know. I talked to a young person. I think it was my, maybe my first year here who had discovered. I think it was my maybe my first year here who had discovered her passion was being an artist for botany. And she had no interest in plants until she discovered that she could combine her art with, you know, the ag classes that she was taking. And so that was a whole new career path for her. Chose to to go on to design school or onto art school in every specific field. So to answer your question about metrics, I don't know if we can measure happiness, but I guess we could try. But I do know that if folks aren't enjoying their experience, they'll either go somewhere else or they just won't come anymore.
So that's, that's a really good answer. You gave me two measures of top of sort of top level measures. One is for the people stay in school, basically. And attendance maybe or graduation rates, although the graduation rate's a little fuzzy number, there's other things in there. The other one you mentioned, which, you know, appeals to my heart is the whether we're doing well at attracting people to school to our district compared to how many we're losing, which would be a top level way of saying, are they getting satisfied, are students having a satisfactory experience? But that's great, but it still would be good if there was a way to know, well, this particular program is paying off and this other one isn't. Or we have a weakness in one place. Is there any way of evaluating those individual elements to see if they're working? Again, I'm asking the question, I know that's not it may not be easy to answer, but it's still the kind of thing that as a school board member wanting to be able to say, yeah, we're improving. The more things I have, so I can point to it rather than just people's subjective impressions or people's descriptions of their own experience, which aren't always reliable. Something that an objective, you know, that I can that I can rely on as a, yeah, I know this this program's working better than that program because this program had a result that was different than that program. Is there any way to do that on the individual element basis, whether it's outdoor school or whether it's building something or tiger tiger manufacturing?
I mean, I think you can, sure, you can look at a couple of different ones. I mean, depends on you know, if if classes are are waning in terms of attendance, people aren't coming to those classes or aren't signing up for those classes anymore, but other ones are. I think maybe we talked about it two years ago, the overwhelming number of students who had signed up for welding. Well, there's something happening. Not everybody wanted to become a welder all of a sudden, but maybe that program is successful because you've got a teacher that people want to to be in class with. It has become a whole other kind of experience they're having. I, you know, I think, you know, from a pure research perspective, it's gonna be very hard to say that it's this factor or that factor. You know, what what's the thing that's gonna move the needle a certain percentage? But I also do think that there are, I don't think that you can underestimate the joy and the engagement factor in the overall, the overall experience of school. And I don't, you know, we've talked about, you know, can you measure that with happy faces or what have you, or you know, those little pain symbols, right? You know, how do you feel from this to that? Which sounds a little bit facetious, but really there are some things around how people feel and and how does school make them feel? So I mean, do you remember the, we had students come from Catalyst when we were in person a while ago, and they came and shared their experiences about being at Catalyst. And I got a little choked up getting it again, just from that last time, cuz it was really touching to hear these students talk about what experience they were having at Catalyst School that made them feel welcome and appreciated and loved and included. And they were coming back to school, they're being in school, they were learning the stuff they were doing. I don't think we can discount that factor either about the sense of belonging. And then, you know, instead of dropping out of school and taking off and doing something else, like they're gonna show up and they're doing their thing. And sometimes, again, we've talked about it before, sometimes it's sports, sometimes it's whatever else. So there's a lot involved in that. So.
We do a, this last one on this, we do a climate study. I don't remember how much of those studies might point to sort of individual experiences like this that might give us some something to use as a comparison. There's so many problems with this. I mean, every time you go to someplace where they somebody gives you a service and they hand out a survey mix, they always tell you, make sure you score us all tens or we're in trouble. I mean, they pollute their own data.
Yeah, right.
I don't, I don't know that teachers do that, but you know, it might be a temptation. So it's just hard to get the data and I'm I'm bringing it up because I want us to keep mine to get better data for us on that. All right, anybody else?
Yeah, I had a question. I was gonna make a comment, Ron, back on that. I mean, kind of just piggyback on what Dr. Jota said, but I think if the administrators, coaches, teachers are honest and they do talk to their kids, you know their kids, you can get pretty solid feedback and the kids will tell you if you really ask them and they don't like survey sheets, they don't fill those out very well. If they're talked to and they're asked a question about certain things, they'll tell you you know, what's going really well and what's not going really well. They like to be challenged. But they they'll be pretty honest, especially your seniors, you know, cuz they're almost out the door. And I think it's a way to measure that, like you're asking for. Joe, I agree with everything you just said about the why we go to all those activities, hard to to figure out, but if we if we get in there, especially with seniors, like even this year and talk to whatever percentage, they will tell us and some of their parents would too. But you have to be ready for the bad news. You have to be ready to take a a hit. Not all educators are willing to do that. They don't like to be told something they don't like to hear. But it's, it helps you not make those same mistakes all the time.
Yeah, all right, I agree. Any other questions on this? All right, let's go to new business, school start start time proposal. And just before, I assume that you're gonna say some things about this. Joe, I want to point out that in my email boxes today, since about one o'clock up till almost meeting time, I got eighteen messages from people arguing for different ones of the options. And so I, we have read all of them and they don't all agree on what the best option should be or whether they're being listened to in one way or the other. So this is a difficult decision for us. So Joe, go ahead and get started on what you need to do to send this.
Okay, and thank you for the opportunity to talk about the school start times. I'm going to revisit a few of the slides that I did last time to make sure we're set up for this and then talk about some opportunities. So quick timeline, we presented the options on March ninth. Talked about the different opportunities, the different times we could do. Talked about also the ad hoc committee's recommendation. We I did recommend that we get some community feedback through this meeting. And then you could make your decision during this meeting. And as Ron, you mentioned, you've gotten some feedback and we have forwarded on anything that came to either myself or to Greg or to the board directly, we distributed to all of you. In the ad hoc process, the committee's process, they did some surveys. They did about sixteen hundred and thirty-nine parent surveys received at that time to ask some generalized questions. So seven hundred came in from elementary and almost nine hundred and forty at secondary. The consensus was the delaying start times is beneficial for adolescent well-being and academic success. And the survey either approved or were neutral toward it. I mean, they didn't necessarily hate it, then they may not have had all of the details to make a very specific recommendation on that on the survey itself. But they did have an opportunity to weigh into what they think at that time. Also, as a reminder, there's a forty-five minute gap in school drop-off times, and that has to do with getting the routes done and then getting back and loading up. So we do our secondary route, which includes both middle school and high school students. Of course, the bulk of our writers are elementary. And then, of course, middle school, cuz high school has a kind of a combination. That's why the secondary route is combined. I looked, I added a few more comparison districts cuz I wanted to give you kind of a broader scope of, we showed you a couple last time from the ad hoc board. I asked Shanna Andrews to go through and make some calls and get some additional times for us. So the ranges are wide, as you can see. So elementary school start times range anywhere from seven forty-five in the morning to nine. And they end anywhere from two fifteen to three thirty PM. Middle school time ranges go anywhere from seven thirty-five to nine fifteen as a start time and end anywhere from two twenty-five to three fifty-five in the afternoon. For high schools, they start anywhere from seven thirty-five to eight forty. And they end anywhere from two thirty to three forty. And so as we collected some of those districts here, most of them nearby or folks that actually, you know, got a hold of and allowed us to find out what was happening. So you can see again that there are districts that start anywhere from seven thirty-five all the way up to eight forty for their high school times, anywhere in between elementary schools. Again, seven, I think, seven fifty, seven forty-five was our earliest time for that, all the way through a nine o'clock time for elementary starts. So a fairly broad range of school start times. Again, I wanna just highlight the fact that every one of these districts has a different set of issues when it comes to busing. And so we cannot necessarily rely exactly on what their differentials are because you know, the topography is different, the number of writers they have is different, the expanse of the district. I mean, obviously, it can be is a slightly different size than Hillsborough. That's why they have three, they have three elementary school start times depending upon where they are. And so transportation is certainly a large part of this, of course. So just kind of keep that in mind as you're considering looking at these times and trying to compare us to others. First student has told us, and I think that we bore this out more than once, that forty-five minutes is our time to build a drop-off and return out to pick up and do those things. So some of the times that were thrown out there, I wanted to remind people what they mean. So if elementary schools started at eight fifteen, that would require a nine AM start at secondary. And we've talked about the secondary schools, both middle school and high school being able to start at the same time, even though there's a differential and drop-off time. If elementary started at eight AM, that would require an eight forty-five start at secondary. And then if elementary started at seven forty-five in the morning, that would require an eight thirty start at secondary, could not be earlier than eight thirty. So as Ron mentioned before, we've got a lot of feedback. And the feedback has led me to believe in probably many of you that there is no right answer. So we have to make the the best answer possible for this. There are folks across the spectrum on which times were right. Everybody had their reasons and their rationales. And all of those were right for their family, but there generally was no right answer one way or the other. So I think this is the the big challenge in all this and a challenge that that faces the board tonight. The ad hoc committee recommended an eight fifteen start for elementary and a nine AM start for secondary. After a lot of conversation, and I'm I'm going to guess that many people will be unhappy and some people will be happy with what we're proposing and or what the committee also proposed from their report. We're proposing an eight o'clock start per elementary and an eight forty-five start for secondary. Let me show you kind of what that looks like from a start and end time. And these end times are approximate because we're still, we'd still have to work through all the details on making sure we're getting our instructional hours. And if we were able to peel back a little bit, if we changed schedules in secondary, there may be some time time savings at the end of the day. It won't be a huge amount, but it is possible that we can shave a few minutes there. So ad hoc committee's recommendation, eight fifteen would get elementary out at two fifty-five. Secondary would have the schools, the secondary school starting at nine and then ending at three fifty PM for middle school and high school at four PM. In this proposed proposal of an eight and eight forty-five start times, eight o'clock would get elementary students out at two forty. And our secondary students would be getting out middle school at three thirty-five and high school at three forty-five. And those would be those, the proposed time. So again, as you mentioned before, Ron, the challenge before you is that there were a wide range of opinions on which one is the best one, and I'm not sure that there is a very right answer. I do know that a nine AM start for our secondary schools is very, very late. And I think that was something that we tried to at least get back a little ways from from that nine o'clock start. I also know that elementary school folks were very adamant about not starting before eight o'clock. So again, two ends of the spectrum, two different answers. As I showed you before, we do have lots of districts to do things in a totally different way. So it's important to realize that, again, I'm not sure that there is a right, right answer. But I wanted to propose that and also propose the ad hoc committee's time that they put out originally from eight fifteen to nine AM start. So I'm going to stop there and I think if you guys would like to discuss, and I can also answer questions along the way as well.
Joe, is, has there been any thought to what, what we we could offer to families who who depend on their high school kids to take care of their their elementary students after school?
Yeah, there has been. The one of the challenges in that is that, so that works okay for walkers if we were going to take if we were going to have students after school for a while at the school. So let's say an elementary school student could could remain there. But then we're talking about, do, are we able to then transport afterwards? Because now you'd be putting elementary school students on with the older kids and that would have created extra stop. And also that would be changing our routes quite a bit. So I don't know, I don't know how many people would actually use that service enough from a walking standpoint. It would probably be easier to be able to have something of that nature. That just requires employee time. So that would mean we would have to, you know, hire that additional hour, hour and a half of that employee or employees, depending upon how many students we're talking about. And also we would be reserving that time for, so it would not be used by other community users until we were until the students were gone. So that's a really unknown number. So I think it's hard for us to say what that would look like. But not impossible for us to do, just, you know, it's an additional cost and additional logistics thing that we'd have to work through.
Have we talked to the the unions? It sounded like the teachers had there and the staff were feeling that they had not been been surveyed or asked what about this?
Well, that was part of my recommendation for keeping it open from last time, cuz you were all talking about making a decision last at the beginning of this month. And that's why I wanted to leave it open for other people to build a way into it, to talk about it. So it does fit within the contract because we have a basic start and end time. You know, the things that we have to always be aware of, of course, within those time schedules I talked about before, a thirty-minute duty free lunch. You know, for licensed and we have to have breaks and lunch built in for our classified. So it has to fit within that time window. That's why on the one of the slides I did, but the end times are approximate cuz we still have to work through how long the classes are. So we follow the law as far as instructional hours. So the instructional hours have to be met for the for the course of the year. And we also have to follow our contracts that we have with both associations to make sure that we're within the time limits of those.
Hey, Joe.
Yep.
Looking at, I mean, I got, you know, all the the stuff from all the people calling in. It seems like the late start time is killing the high school. When I was looking through these recap of the ad hoc on the different school districts. One of our big questions is, is are young kids being picked up by siblings? And it seemed like Forest Grove, who starts high school at eight fifteen, they're out at three oh five. That would answer a big question for the high school, then elementary school kids are not starting on nine, that would allow our high school kids within those families to pick those kids up. It seemed like that would solve a big problem, wouldn't it?
How do you mean?
Well, if elementary school kids need to have their siblings to pick them up, then their siblings would be out of school at three oh five at Forest Grove. Elementary school kids get out at three fifteen, they have a little bit shorter day. Then we've covered a, one of the major complaints and not put our high school in a pickle with their end of this school daytime. The only thing we'd be facing is before school, families who have to get kids dropped off, but we we're gonna private that issue no matter what. What would be wrong with that kind of thing? Cuz people are, you know, like you said, there's no perfect answer here, but this starts high school at eight fifteen, that seemed to fit into a lot of the 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 zones that the high school teachers, admin, coaches were talking about. And the elementary kids would have a later start time, which that's not so bad cuz then if they had to have their siblings pick them up, that answers that question right there.
I think the, maybe the folks at the ad hoc committee could talk more about the the change in moving from elementary, starting before and after, that that actually came from the committee. So I brought this recommendation based upon that knowledge. You also, at a nine o'clock start for elementary, you also will have a lot of before-school care, so there's a, there you're. You're changing one for the other, a nine o'clock start makes it so you've got more time in the morning. It it's really entirely, I mean, I'm not sure if other folks from the ad hoc committee want to talk about. That opportunity, I don't know if you discussed that in your committee as well.
Yeah, we did. We did, and Dave, the thing is, most people said that it was much more difficult to arrange for before-school care than after-school care. And all of the science that we looked at said that you want secondary starting after eight thirty. So that was, you know, that's the CDC guidelines, that's the American Medical Association, American Psychological Association. All of the organizations that have studied this and looked at it. Said that secondary school start time should be after eight thirty, so that's why we recommended that it be flipped to have. Elementary start first was those two considerations.
Yeah, and I'll just share that, you know, I had really hoped that we would be able to find a way forward to start the secondary later. Since I'm not going to be on the board to follow through with implementation on this. I I'm not comfortable for voting for a change that's contentious. So, you know, my vote would be to. Stay with our current schedule. That's because my position with with stepping away from the board, I would encourage the board to look at what they want to see moving forward.
You're on the board now, Bob.
Correct.
Well, I have. I have a question about. Because of the responses we received from the teachers. I wonder if if we could just do a survey with the teachers. They they don't feel that they were part of the ad hoc committee survey. And just to make sure that we, you know, we. Did we, that we do our due diligence in hearing from all the can, all the people in. Because it will involve changing their times, start times and end times to their work schedule.
Good question, so did the survey not go to the teachers?
I thought it did, but but it sounded like it.
You mean the initial survey?
Yes.
Yeah, the initial survey went out to all kinds of, I I'm not sure Bob or Brian if. Do you remember how the survey went out to everybody?
I can't recall if it was specifically sent to staff or not, that we'd have to look into that.
Okay.
I believe it was definitely set up in a way where teachers who wanted to provide input could provide input. And, you know, we kept it open for over a month now, so that anyone who else who wanted to provide input could provide input. And I think we could keep this open until the end of time. On the excuse that maybe there's someone out there who has not provided input. But this has been a, what, going on five-month process that we've been doing? And I feel like anyone, everyone involved in the district knows that we're looking at this by this point. And we've received a ton of feedback. Almost all of it, everything we've gone in the last couple days has been in support of. The original recommendations of the ad hoc committee. I'm perfectly fine compromising and going with Joe's option B. You know, a good compromise is one that leaves all the parties dissatisfied. But I think kicking the can and abdicating responsibility to make a difficult decision is not the right way to go here.
So Joe, again, you're, I'm I'm going back through, I'm trying to find your your proposal there.
The proposal, so the ad hoc committee was the eight fifteen elementary, nine AM secondary. And I proposed an eight AM elementary and eight forty-five secondary. Compromise making everybody unhappy on both sides. And that's actually not true, there are folks who are, I think we've seen. You've gotten feedback across the board on different times, so people are all interested in different ways to look at it.
So the the motion at the bottom of this one, using this language, this would be to approve. The eight AM, eight forty-five start time, is that correct, Joe? Where it says move the, approve the calendar, I'm sorry, I'm on the, I skipped down to the wrong resolution. Where it says the approve the start times presented by Superintendent Morlock, that's the option B, is that correct?
That would be correct, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would recommend modifying the motion to specifically state. What the start time is, we just didn't have that finalized at the time the packet was created.
Okay, I I move that the Newburgh School District Board of Directors approve the start time presented by Superintendent Morlock. To start elementary at eight AM and middle and high school at eight forty-five AM.
Do we have a second?
I will second that motion.
We have a motion and second, so we're still discussing the motion as to, and the motion on the floor is the eight AM, eight forty-five AM. Start and stop time. Other thoughts?
Yeah, I I'd like to get back to, you know, we've had a ton of feedback in the high school, guys, and. It's a lot more complicated at at that level for the students, I I get the parent thing, I've been there. But there's a lot of ramifications if we're going to be the latest starting high school in our district. For the high school and. You know, going back to. You know, the impact, it's not going to, there's not going to be one decision, Brian was right, there's not going to be one thing that makes everybody happy, but. Again, going back to if we're going to start elementary school before high school. We need to make sure that. The that that we're just not torpedoing the high school on all the things, we just talked about this whole long list of great things we want to do in our district. And and yet, everything we heard was is that's going to impact those greatly. And I agree with Rebecca, I think getting back to. Whether it's their fault or not, and they didn't call into the board meeting, we don't always do things right either, I think Rebecca's right, we should get to the staff at least. Put this on the table for a vote till at least the next meeting. And I think as as a board. With Dr. Joe is is get to that high school staff and say, come up with better reason than, because they're really fighting that late, that latest start time. And if we go, if we go seven forty-five for elementary, okay, that's fifteen minutes. But if we go that late for the high school. Then they're saying that's messing up everything. For, you know, for fifteen minutes for our grade school kids. And if we can't put grade school after high school, which we could. But that's going to create problems for parents. Then would they rather start at nine and have that problem or start at seven forty-five? And our high school starts at eight thirty, which the high school said they could live with that. That means the middle schools could live with that. We're still getting the kids almost an extra hour's sleep, we're hitting that goal.
So one, one of the reasons why I decided to second this. You know, I was one to bring up the concern about after-school care. Because it's something that my family had to go through. But as I'm thinking about this. Trying to provide childcare for both before school and after school. Would have been a nightmare. I remember in middle school, there was a chunk of time where. My dad worked really early, and because we lived close enough to the school where we had to walk. He would drop me off and I would wait before the school would open the doors. Now, he was comfortable with doing that, but I know if my younger siblings were doing that, that wouldn't have been an option. So finding that care for before and after really puts a debt in families' income. And some people can't even do it, and oftentimes this is why it leads to kids having to work. To try and support the family financially. So I'm not happy that we didn't have a right answer. But I'm content that this is the in-between, and that's why I second it.
Yes, can you clarify for me, I thought if if it's true that. Arranging pre-school care is also a double problem. Why did you endorse option B instead of option A, which would have less preschool, be earlier for the kids, the elementary kids? I may not understand your position, that's why I'm asking.
Because you would ensure that the younger kids are in a safe place rather than earlier. Rather than not. So you only have the, you only need the care in one direction.
Right, and my question was, if you start at seven forty-five, you'd have, they'd be there even earlier.
Right. But they would still, that's why I said, like, none of the options are great, but it's the in-between. Solution.
So I understand why eight fifteen isn't as good, because that would require more preschool care. I guess I'm still not sure why seven forty-five is better from your point of view. Is it, is it because you don't, you're trying to minimize?
Well, and I'm not a morning person, so I was all for, like, the later the better. And I personally was never in sports because I did have to work at a young age. So to me, like, the later impacting sports was not an issue, it was. Can I get to work at a certain time? So that's why I still wanted to advocate for a later start time. Because of someone that's not a morning person, I don't function really before. Still, to this day before nine, I really don't function, so.
Yeah, I understand that, seven forty-five is frontier territory for me too, but. I just wondered, no, thank you, it helps me.
Yeah.
So if we started elementary school at seven forty-five. Then obviously we have staff there, I mean, because we're starting at seven forty-five, that's when class would start, so. You know, at at the high school, when we say we start at seven, you know, thirty-five. You know, your staff's there, ready to rock and roll by seven unless they're coming in late with their Dutch Bros, so. You know, they're there, our kids are going to be safe. And. Then we're not hamstringing the the secondary levels for everything that, you know, that they're trying to accomplish. And I'm not talking about just sports, I'm talking about everything. You know, we're trying to expand everything we're trying to do, club-wise, all the 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 band music, you know, drama, all that kind of stuff. Everything at the alt-school. Sorry, catalyst. I think anything later than eight thirty really hurts them, because that's what they keep saying to us over and over and over really hard. I I like the seven forty-five and eight thirty shot. But if you guys all went away and I had to make a decision by myself, I'd probably start the elementary kids at nine and. And have a care program there at the elementary school for the families that need it, and so those siblings for the older kids could be there to pick up their kids after school, and then you're hitting it both ways. You know, then you've got kids covered from any kind of family situation, if they need care before school. And if they have to be picked up after school.
You still won't be able to start the secondary school at a time that is consistent with what the recommendations of the medical community are, though. Because you'd be starting at eight fifteen.
That's still like. It's giving those kids basically an extra hour before they get there.
Well.
High school.
A little short of that, but yeah.
And I I just, I don't. I understand people are going to have to make adjustments, people are going to have to make adjustments, no matter what decision we make, they're going to have to adjust to those decisions. But, you know, we're constantly wringing our hands about the sixth grade drop-off and the ninth grade drop-off. In terms of performance. And is it possible that maybe part of that drop-off is because we're battling biology at that age? That's what the medical research seems to indicate. So we might be improving things dramatically by this simple change. And I don't believe that fifteen minutes is a make or break amount of time for the high school. I don't believe that fifteen minutes will will make the world of difference. I think if we make it so it starts at eight forty-five, the world will continue spinning. You know, programs will adjust their times, kids will still have sports. And all of the medical evidence suggests that they will be more likely to engage with those sports programs. And be more successful at those sports programs if we start after eight thirty for secondary schools.
Joe, can you remind me of the comparison schools, which one had the latest end time for high school, or, yeah, latest end time? And compare that to what we would be at eight forty-five, say, eight forty-five start.
Lake Ashweag, three forty.
We we done by three forty, if we were done by, if we started at forty-five.
I pull his school's up praise, you can see them.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, they started eight thirty and then three forty, they're, they seem to be a little longer than ours.
It is.
If we start at forty-five, what time are we done again?
Three thirty.
Three forty. That's way late, guys, that's way, that's tough.
So Lake Ashweag was three forty, that was the latest, right? And what about in our, what about in our, is Lake Ashweag in our conference?
No.
No.
So McMinville's in our conference, they're done at three. Sure. West Lynn, oh, that's, somehow they do that. So it looks like everybody else in our conference is done by the ones we have here, three twenty or so. So we'd be about twenty minutes later than everybody else if we went to that one. There was some talk about the going to a block schedule, I know that's not in front of us right now, and we can't really count on that necessarily.
Correct.
How much, does the day get shorter a little bit if we go to the block schedule?
Yeah, it's possible, because we talked about the number of transitions being fewer, and so it could back that time up a little bit. That decision hasn't been made yet, but that is another opportunity for the, and that's why I put on that slide originally. That the end times are approximate, because if we were to make a change. At secondary, specifically specifically at high school, those change, those numbers could roll back a little bit, because you'd have, I think it's three fewer transitions.
That'd be about fifteen minutes on the day.
Yeah, right.
So if we started eight forty-five and did block, we'd be finishing at eight twenty, three twenty-five, which would put us pretty close. To some of the other district schools. Well, I'm not, I mean, it, just to speak for myself, at this point. I'd be much more comfortable making this decision in combination with the block decision. Than I am without the block decision, because it seems like that is a material factor in whether the block decision gives us benefit or not. If one of the things we can buy with the block decision is a later start for the benefit of secondary schools, that's a factor in in this decision. Say something about the timing of when these two decisions have to be made. And whether we're even talking about next year for block anymore, are we too late for that, or where are we on that?
No, we're not too late, I know, we've been, it's actually, part of this is about budgeting, we do have another meeting. With our high school folks, and I want to say it's coming up. Could be Wednesday, Thursday. To talk a little bit about it from an equity perspective, so we're going to be looking at at the the block schedule through that lens as well. Preparing, I think that, I want to say it's tomorrow, but I could be wrong, yeah, it is tomorrow. So we're in just a few weeks' time, we've got to make that decision on a block schedule as it is, to move forward on that one. And that's specifically at high school right now, we're not, we're not discussing that at middle school currently. They feel like they probably need another year of prep time to get ready to to move forward or something like that for the school year, but. Our high school folks have certainly brought it up, and we've talked about it. Um our high school folks certainly brought it up, and we've talked about it, um in the last um. One, maybe two years, they have done forecasting for eight slots of classes to prepare for the opportunity to do that, so. Um you know, we're within a month's time of having to have that decision made and the prep actually happening for it, so. Um it's, it, it's not too, it wouldn't be too late. Um I, you know, I think there's a couple of different decisions here, that's why I did put down on this one that there are, end times are approximate. Um because there can be some changes happening, uh like that block schedule that could move that time as well.
So for myself, if we had to decide the day on this, I would pick B. On the notion that I, puts me in strong pressure to prove a block schedule, cause I do not think eight forty is a thing that we should uh do to our. Athletes or to anybody, everybody else in the conference. And uh but eight twenty-five might be doable, and. Uh if we don't have to decide the day, if we could to put the two decisions together, I'd be way more comfortable about this. And that's just me speaking, and I'm, uh so everybody else needs to weigh in as well.
Should we, we make um. An amendment to the motion? To post, to postpone the, the motion until.
Probably be just a motion to table, but yeah, that's how you.
Yeah, a, a motion. Well, I would like to motion at, to table this, 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 this motion. Until, till the um block schedule is brought up.
I'd second that.
All right, well, that's the motion on the floor now, you wanna discuss the motion table, anybody? I'm not absolutely sure that we can, I haven't looked it up, technically discussed the motion to table, but if everybody just, nobody objects.
Come on, Ron, you don't know the rules.
And you would think, I, we certainly can, we could certainly proceed to ju- discuss it if there's no objection.
No, it's in order, um so. Joe, if we table it tonight, we, you can bring us both items at the next meeting. And that won't, that, we still have enough time to make the decision for the next school year, is that?
Yeah, it probably wouldn't be, it probably wouldn't be next meeting, but it would, it. Well, it might be next meeting, let's see if we can get it done for next meeting, e- even if it's next meeting or the meeting after that, it would not be too late, I think that we have. Uh I think one of the important things to do is uh to alert the public that this is happening, I think we've done that a lot, so people are aware of those changes. It would have been my preference to do things a couple of months ago, of course, as we talked about before, um but time seems to be. Uh irrelevant in the time of COVID, and so I think we can um still navigate through this. Um again, like I said before, the block schedule stuff has to be decided in the next um couple of weeks anyway, so. I will target to get this on for our next board meeting to get both those things going, so you would know the progress of that.
So where, where are we on this, anybody else wanna say something about the motion to table? And by the way, I'm probably jumping around between prams because my computer keeps failing, but I prefer, cause I can only see three of the board members on my phone, so.
So I, you know, I support, I support this move and I support the block schedule. And if it's more likely to pass both of those by tabling it to the next meeting, then I can support the motion to table.
Yeah, I think actually it's a good strategy, because if it's likely that you'll get more support for later. Then it pushes, it makes it easier to support a later start, that's all I'm saying.
Yep.
If we can do it together. Are we ready to vote on the motion to table?
Yeah.
I can't see everybody, so.
Sure.
Okay, so uh all those in favor of the motion to table, please raise your hand, just. Everybody can see. All right, all those opposed? All right, now I've got everybody back, uh looks like it passed. Five minutes, uh six to nothing, right? All right, good, uh uh I appreciate that careful discussion, folks, I think it was a good discussion. And uh this is still, we're still working on this, so appreciate it very much. How about the calendar change for secondary, are we ready to talk about that?
Uh yes, this is um an issue, as it says in the packet, dealing with the transition back to in-person hybrid learning where the. Quarter three, this is just for middle school and high school, this does not affect elementary at all. Um but for middle school and high school, where the quarter was to end. Thursday, April fifteenth, and a grading day on Friday, April fifteenth, the proposal is to change to have. Uh the last day for classes be Tuesday, April thirteenth, uh grading day, Wednesday, April fourteenth, and then Thursday. And Friday, the fifteenth and sixteenth, as prep days for the change to in-person hybrid.
All right, any discussion? You are all, um I, yeah, it shut down for a second, I thought I was blocked out again, but nobody's saying anything and nobody seems to be moving. There, Dave's getting a drink, I can see that. Uh do we have a motion?
I move that the Newburgh School District Board of Directors approve the calendar change for middle and high school as presented.
I second.
All right, we have a motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor of uh moving, approving this motion, please raise your hand.
Hi.
All right, good, any opposed? Okay, looks like it's six to nothing. All right, uh future agenda items, so if we look at your uh. At the end of your packets, look at the future agenda. The superintendent contractor renewal has been bumped back, so I assume it's gonna probably come up on the thirteenth. It's a great day, it's only Tuesday the thirteenth, so it's not really an unlikely day. We have moved this discussion of the start time possibly to the thirteenth preferably. And uh we got dual language coming up. Comprehensive, comprehensive sexual education plan, could we possibly do that on the same day as the start time? And discuss superintendent evaluation process, um any changes that you see in the next meeting, uh possibly, Joe?
Uh no, just the uh start time and the report on the block schedule piece, that would be the addition.
And possibly the superintendent contract renewal.
And possibly superintendent contract, yeah, I'm assuming that we had that for next time, yep.
It looks like it might be a full agenda, we'll be meeting, uh Randy and I will be meeting with uh Greg and Joe. A week ahead of time to see if that's all gonna work. Anybody else have comments about what they see coming up? All right, if there's no objection, let's, I'll, I'm ready to adjourn this meeting, we will reconvene in. Uh five minutes for the, or how long do you need, Greg?
Uh that should be okay.
Okay, let's try to reconvene in five minutes, let's call it nine, well, I'll give you seven minutes, nine forty-five.
Is it a different link, because I don't see a different link for the.
There is a different link.
Link in the email that I sent this morning, would you like me to resend it?
That would be great if you could.
Yeah, I will, I will resend that, and just so that the public knows, executive sessions are just for board members and they're not. Public meetings and can only deal with one specific issue according to the ORS.
Okay, I, I found it, so if no one else needs it, you don't need.
This time the executive session will be for uh real estate transactions ORS. One ninety-two, six sixty, two E, just so you know, all right, we'll adjourn this session and we'll be back at nine forty-five, please.